Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to council in the middle of summer. And it is summer out there today. I'd like to recognize before we even start tonight, the beautiful time we had on Talbot Street on Saturday with nostalgia nights. It was a incredible night full of cars and excitement and music and what a great deal of fun. So we're looking forward to this week mural fest, same way, same thing. So let's, uh, let's look forward to that. This is our 23rd meeting of the 142nd Council of the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas. And the first thing I'll ask you is, is there any disclosures of interest from the members? Seeing none, we'll move on to minutes.
Leadership, I have a motion that the minutes of the meeting held on June 20th, 2022 be confirmed. Moved by Council Herbert, seconded by Council Peters.
Questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, any opposed, that is carried. Next item.
Council will now resolve itself into committee of the whole to deal with the following business. The first committee this evening is strategic direction and development. And the first item for this committee is in out of the cold presentation. We have Margaret Berry and Sharice Swarath from the in out of the cold to make a PowerPoint presentation. If we can ask them to come up to the podium and if the members could switch to podium view on their button.
I see it glowing. I'll know it's on. It's not. We'll check it for you.
We're on.
There we go. You're on.
Red light's on. That was my first clue. Okay. Well, thank you very, very much for us, for inviting us to be here tonight. We're quite thrilled about that and it's, sorry.
Like perfect.
Is that better? Much better. Okay. All right. I'll start over. Thank you very much for inviting us. We consider this a real honor to be able to talk about our in out of the cold. And we want to explain to you tonight what it is we're doing, how we've gotten to where we are and where we started out. And I think that's really important for a lot of people to understand where we came from and where we are now. To really understand how we have grown in the last year. So I'll start by giving you just a little bit of history, a little bit of background. It started in 2010. Ken Brooks is the founder of the in out of the cold, which you may know or may not know. One day his wife got a call that she was invited to knit mittens for the people on the street. And Heather decided that that wasn't quite enough for the people on the street. So that's how they got to get their heads together and decided that they would develop the in out of the cold for St. Thomas Elgin. The, uh, it was at that time, it was seasonal. It was just for the winter, hence the name in under the cold, but that has changed significantly. And now we are all seasons at any time of the day or night. We give our people, we call them our guests, three meals a day. We do their laundry or they can do their laundry. They can have showers. They have a warm bed. They have privacy. They have clothes. They have personal care items, which is particularly important for the women. And they have lockers that they can actually put their stuff in. All of their worldly possessions are with them at all times. So now they have a place that they can keep them safe. What we do also for our guests is that we work with them and with all the other agencies of St. Thomas. Inter agencies within our, the community to get them to appropriate housing and appropriate assistance. We make sure that they understand that we understand that housing comes before everything else. There's nothing else you can do until you have a roof over your head. The end's goal is of increasing services. That was our goal. It is still our goal and the services to all of our guests that we reach. And we have done that and we have surpassed our goals that we originally started out with in spite of COVID. From COVID, we learned a lot. I'm sure a lot of people say the same thing, but we learned a lot from COVID and how important we were in order to keep the guests of St. Thomas safe and healthy. So for the board, I'm the chair of the board and we are a nine member board now. We started out, when I started, I started out as, um, as a volunteer on, in the hospitality suite. Hospitality suite in the hospitality part. And suddenly I became the, the president a year later. I was strong armed by Sandy Westaway, of course. And so I became the, the proud president or chair of the inn and have been doing that now for three years. So part of our board, and I think this is really important for us, is that we went from five to nine. And in that board, we have lawyers, we have HR people, we have accountants, healthcare, business, social services, police, and even a business owner from downtown St. Thomas. And that's very critical for us because we get so much different. Everyone looks through a different lens at our guests and the end. We have really grown. And when I started, we didn't have an executive director. There were two staff and a multitude of volunteers. At that time, I believe there were 134 volunteers. That changed dramatically when COVID came along. Now we have an executive director, we have case managers, we have staff support, we have custodial support. We have security support. We're a big team and we've gone as far as becoming a 22 member staff, which is a very big deal when you come from two. The reason I emphasize that is that we have done all of that in the last six months. So we went, uh, it's, it's called growth, but at warp speed. That's how we've grown up and we have become adults in this particular sector. The volunteers that we currently have, after COVID hit, we lost all of our volunteers. Soon as we put a policy out that our, part of our mandate was for everyone to be vaccinated. The volunteers started to come back and we now have 61 volunteers. It takes 13 hours of volunteer work per day to run the shelter. That's on top of our staff. That tells you how much work is done in a day and how important our volunteers are to us. We have a volunteer coordinator who's with us tonight, Sharice. And that's a big, big job is keeping everybody on target, scheduling, keeping them happy and keeping them safe. And telling them all the new people, uh, getting them acclimated to our, to our particular guests and our, our building. So it's quite a job. The in-person services, we partnered with all agencies. Our goal was to have every agency possible, one every day of a new, a new agency in St. Thomas. And that means that we have become a hub. In the past, what has happened is that we were trying to connect a guest with housing or with medicine or with anything. They get lost because they would have to leave in the morning and we wouldn't see them again until the nighttime. So now we have them with us 24/7. They can, every time the hub shows up, they can go see that hub. And the 22 people have been housed since we have moved into Ten Princess. That's a really, really big deal and we would not have been able to do that without our partners. And again, we have been able to do that, not just house them anyplace at all, but housing them in appropriate places where they have assistance and support as they need it. We have also encouraged 80 of our guests to be on the by names list. And for those that don't know what that means, it means that they have allowed us to put their names on a list. That means that they will be, they will be looked at first for housing and particularly if they have critical needs. During the last year and more recently in this last six months, I, I look at our lifespan as really being six months. Because that's when it all started, really got ramped up. It took a long time to get ramped up to it. There were so many things that needed to be done for our transition. But as soon as we got into the inn, that's when it really started. Because so much of what we did, or at least thought we were, should do, some, some of it just didn't work. And you don't know that until you actually do it. Oh, that doesn't work. Okay, we'll try something else. And because of the staff that we have that are so innovative and so resourceful and so compassionate and dedicated to what they do. They are able to pivot on in a moment like that, just in a second. It's amazing to watch them do it. So we have security people, we have staff and we have security technology. We have a lot of cameras all over the building and around the building and outside on our patio. Over the last year, we have put together policies and procedures that were never in place before. And we are pretty well policed out, I can tell you as a board. We're, uh, we're taking a little policy break right now until we can take a breather and then we will go back and finish off the policies that we need to get into our manual for those that come after us, the old succession planning thing. The, uh, we have hired, as I say, 22 people, but we are always looking for more people, particularly for relief. Because we need people 24 hours a day. It's very hard to get people who want to work at night and they will work just when they're called. That's, that's hard to find people who are willing to do that. We have improved our reporting tools, which is critical in some cases for the police and for court. Things that we need to be part of, we need to take good notes and we have really ramped that up so that everything is all in one place. Everybody can view it and we can pull it up at any time. And the police often come to us and look at our cameras in order to see who's doing what and then make a decision from what they see that we have been able to capture and our notes and our, uh, our eyewitness testimony as well. We encourage community members to come and I ask for you, uh, not all at once, but maybe one at a time come. And we would love to have you come in and do a tour. Maybe somebody of, some of you already have on the opening day, but it would be really nice for you to come and have a look and see how we operate. We have the three floors with the business offices in the downstairs. We have the dining room and then we have a huge dorm upstairs for men and women who are separated now. They have laundry and showers and they can go off to their dorms and be safe and be quiet and rest. They can stay there all day until such time as the custodians come in and clean. And then they have to be out of the dorms for a three or four hours so that, but otherwise they can go and sit around the dining room. They don't have to leave. They can stay there all day long and all night long, which is a far cry from what they were doing. We have ongoing training for our staff and for our board. We endorse lots of training. We pay for it. We endorse it and we hope to continue to be able to do that. We, uh, we think that it's really important for our people to be well trained in order to handle some of the, um, occasions that they have to handle. In the near future, I think it's in with another month, all of our staff will have trauma training. And that has been donated by a very generous donor here in St. Thomas. Who came in for a tour and talked to one of our staff, Sharice in fact, and she mentioned the, uh, the education that we would like to give all of our staff and they're paying for it, which is really nice. Which shows you what a wonderful community this is. I have been, I've lived in a lot of different places and I've never seen a more generous community than St. Thomas. I say that all the time because it's true. COVID, we should tell you a little bit about COVID and what we had to do during that time. COVID was a real struggle for us. We had many guests who were sick. They were very compliant, I must say though, most of them would mask up. A lot of them got sick. They would get sick in groups. We had to isolate them and we had to monitor their recovery with, along with EMS. And we had to bring them their three meals a day. So we're very much part parcel of, uh, how they got well and then went back to, uh, wherever they were staying, hopefully with us. That's how we would find them if they would come out the street. Sometimes the police would bring them to us that they needed to be isolated. We strictly followed all of the restrictions and we also have, um, offered vaccination clinics. We still offer vaccination clinics. One of our hubs that comes in is a doctor and a nurse and they come in once a week. And in speaking to them last week, they see between 12 and 22 people on, every time they come in. They're looking at wound care, care. They're looking at some of their medication, which they get mixed up with and they help them sort that out. And it's a real benefit. Been in the past, we've had nurses come in, but they didn't utilize it like they do here this time. It's, it's really been very, very successful. Um, the, uh, again, I would say that to you again, that it would be a good idea for you to come and have a look around our space. So what we have in front of you here is a graphic picture of our statistics for the, uh, the last six months. It's kind of an overview and we will have paper copies of that for you. And we'll leave them at the desk and you can pick them up when you leave if you would like to take that with you and you can look at it at your leisure. I'm going to ask Sharice Savartho to come up now and she's the builder of this. And so she could just walk you through the statistic.
Thank you. Um, it's always a pleasure to follow. It's an honor actually to follow the lead of our board president, Margaret Berry. So I just want to send choice greetings this evening. On behalf of the staff and the volunteers at the inn to you, Mayor Preston, um, to our city manager and to each individual that's sitting here this evening. It's an honor to be here on their behalf. So thank you for having us. I want to be cognizant of the time though, recognizing that that graphic has a little bit more to it at the bottom. I will reiterate what Margaret has shared, which is that we do have handouts available for you following. That graphic actually captures basically a numeric rundown of what's been going on at the end over the past six months. We opened our doors there, January 26th. Um, we've been operational 24/7. Um, we don't take holidays at the end. We do function with a team of 61 currently today, 63 volunteers and a team of 22 staff. We are a 40-bed shelter. We do offer male, female spaces and flex dorms. We have worked very, very hard to collaborate and to Margaret's points earlier. We have been able to kind of form ourselves as a hub in the community. And so we have enjoyed the benefit of having CMH AT events onsite weekly with us. St. Thomas Elgin Social Services, there are several up there, CCHC, the Food Network meets with us regularly. Southwest Public Health Indwell has been a strong backbone, um, ready to intercept the needs of various individuals in our care. As well as YWCA, who we meet with on a regular basis, Race Cafe and even Give Back St. Thomas. So it just shows you again that we have larger and smaller entities alike who have investment in the inn and desire to see the people that access our services succeed. And to that point, with their support and with the support of the community. We have been able to successfully provide 12,000 meals, uh, just in six months alone. We've been able to shelter 5,400 overnight stays. We've been able to assist as many as 80 plus individuals to St. Thomas's active by name list, which is basically the list demonstrating urgent need that way. We've been able to directly facilitate transitions from shelter to housing to a number of 22 so far. I will be quick to point out that that does not encapsulate the entire number of individuals in this community who have been rehomed. Again, there's such a drive by other partners right now to assist with that piece. And so we're just, it's an exciting time. We're excited to be present. Um, we're excited to be able to be involved. Again, the graphic handout that you're going to get will have everything aligned appropriately for easy reading. But I will share this piece with you. Between our volunteers, our staff and our leadership, we've had a 73% organizational capacity in the past six months. In my estimation, that's, that's pretty explosive for, for any entity such as ours. Especially given the transience of some of the individuals who come in and out. I do sometimes when volunteers come asking, kind of compare us a little bit to, um, the, the level of energy that you may see in an emergency department, simply because we don't always know who's going to come through the door. But we have to be ready and equipped to intercept whoever does and to meet them right where they're at. Hence the reason we have had such an explosive increase in capacity with regard to our needs for staffing volunteers and board direction that way. We strive to offer life skills and just to help the individuals in our care first and foremostly believe in themselves. They often access our services feeling, feeling very, very distrustful. Um, and, and very concerned that they are not going to be liked right where they are for who they are. Um, and so we try to promote a very, very non-judgmental atmosphere. We also have to balance safety with that piece as well though. Given the situations that individuals are coming to us from, we have to make sure that we give a positive and safe experience. To that end, the board does endorse a lot of development, a lot of training for the team. And, uh, we're just excited about how well our staff, particularly following COVID, are being empowered to really just kind of take up the cause and, and kind of be the figureheads, if you will, for the initiative in this community to see homelessness resolved. And so to that end, you know, I, I go to sleep every night thankful that homelessness in North America is a solvable matter. And homelessness in Canada is a solvable matter and homelessness right here in St. Thomas is an easily solvable matter. And it is being solved and I would encourage each of you to just hold on to that piece and let the process be what it is. If I can just take one step further for you quickly. I want to exemplify what's being shared this evening with a few thoughts that unexpectedly came to me from a volunteer recently. A lot of ordinary individuals like you, like me, like to access the inn, um, just to offer care for the people that, um, access our services. This little piece landed in my email one morning and I hope it will warm your heart as it warmed mine. This volunteer says, hi Sharice, I have to share my morning happy cry with you. She says, there's a former guest who'd been gone for some time. I always enjoyed my interactions with him and he was thankful and very quiet and never any trouble as far as I could see in my limited time here. I had been thinking about him lately and wondering if he was okay. And today, while shopping in town, he served me. He was very professional and he was very polite. He looked so happy and so healthy. I think he recognized me, but I didn't want to say too much, so I just gave him a big smile and thanked him. And then I sat in my truck and cried and cried and cried. It gave me so much hope for the rest of the folks at the inn. This could be so many of them if we just keep helping. I hope that impacts you the way that impacted me and that's the reason I get up and I drive here every day. Because I want to see your community succeed as well as Margaret and all the rest of the individuals that were here representing tonight. So I hope that that will benefit you as you discuss us further.
I think I'd, I'd like to tell one more little story that I learned as I was coming in here from, from Sharice and from Christina. That, uh, yesterday they got a little girl home after being trafficked last night. And, uh, they were staying at the inn. They figured out how she got there, who is she, who she was with. And they got away from him and got him in a cab, got her in a cab and sent her home to her mother in North Bay. That's what we do. So does anyone here in this room have any questions for us? I'm sure you do and we're happy to answer them.
Well, thank you. First of all, Margaret and Sharice, thank you so much for sharing with us today. The stats of the first six months and, and where we've gone. We recognize as a council, we put a pile of pressure on in other call, now the inn, um, to new position, more beds, more things to do. And we're happy to have you here telling us some of the stories today. So let's see questions from council. Joan, sorry, Councilor Rymel, it's summer. I'm really casual tonight.
That's all right. It's summer. I just had, so are your shifts eight hour shifts or 12 hour shifts or you said you had two staff on per shift?
We have eight hour shifts. Yes.
And then the, the other part of, um, what's different now is that people stay there, they can stay there 24/7. But then you mentioned then when the custodian comes in, so can I, if I'm there and I have a bed space and, and my stuff is there. Can I, you know, when the custodian comes, can I leave my stuff on that same bed? Like, will I come back to that same spot?
Yes, Sharice can answer that. The answer to that is yes.
Thank you. Yes. No, that's a great question. Thank you. So we actually shut the dorms down for four hours daily from 11 AM till 2 PM. Just to allow time, pardon me, that's three hours, just to allow time to clean them. During that time, we take a look at the bed space that each individual is given. Because we are at the capacity we are, we have to maintain health and safety standards as meted out by the province. As meted out by Moltech, as meted out by Public Health Agency of Canada as well as fire codes. And so we have to take a look at the spaces where individuals stay to make sure that they are neat and that they can be easily accessed in the event of a fire, heaven forbid. And so for this reason, we actually work with the guests by offering them life skills, teaching them how to do laundry, how to sort things. How to decide what is important enough for them to keep when they transition to the next location, which we hope is permanent. Versus what could be safely parted with because it's not going to serve them well in future.
So when I, when I have to go out during those three hours, then I can't leave my stuff or I.
You can leave your things. You can leave your things. They will be under the watchful eye of a guard. They will be under the watchful eye of staff.
Cause I, I've heard comments that there is concerns about theft, you know, and people are, are always concerned about their stuff. And they want to keep it all with them and, and we have concerns too with people outside around the inn, you know, and they have all their belongings with them. And it's the, the outside space is very small, you know, that the.
You're right, it is. And rightfully so. There is an element of distress because unfortunately theft is something that goes on in every urban shelter. Um, and so unfortunately guests do have alliances with other guests. Some of them are trauma bonds. Some of them are just various emotional alliances. Some feel the right to take from others, vice versa. Something that we have to be cognizant of, hence the reason that we have an inside guard to try to quell a lot of that. It's a part and piece that occurs in urban shelters though.
Is the security guard there, is he part of the two staff or he's in addition to the two staff?
We have a separate security company that we hired to come in.
Okay. And they're 24/7?
Sorry.
Are they 24/7?
Yes, they're there 24/7 and we're actually now thinking about getting, um, a, a second guard to kind of guard out the perimeter. Because we know that, uh, some of the issues that are going on right now are the look outside the, the inn, which is pretty good for 80% of the time. But some of the time they get out of control and there's, there's only, there's about four or five people that actually have to have their shopping carts with them at all times. And so they park outside the fence, but we do our very best to keep everything inside the fence. And, uh, whenever it doesn't, our staff is committed and outside trying to get them to tidy it up. And most of the time we're talking about a very small group of people within our guest group. The rest of them do the same thing. They are working with us to keep it neat and tidy.
Same thing. It's just, yeah, it's just a concern. You know, you hear concerns from. Same thing. It's just, yeah, it's just a concern. You know, you hear concerns from people, businesses in the area who have concerns. And then it is also an additional um need for our police, you know, to be there on a, on a almost daily, I would say daily basis.
But they're, they're, they also have an office there. So you, and we often have the police just do a courtesy uh visit. So they don't, when you see a police car out front, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're there because they have been called there. They may be there just to visit. They may be there as a courtesy, or they may just be going in to uh their office. So I think, of course, soon as everybody sees a police car, they assume something's going on, but that isn't necessarily the case. We actually, since we have had guards, the uh, the police calls that we have draw, have had. Uh, compared to the past have dropped, I think it's what eighty percent or seventy percent? I can't, it's, it's least at the minimum, it's fifty percent. And that's pretty good. So uh the police are, are very happy with the kind of statistics that we're rolling out now for the need to call them.
Okay, thank you.
Were there questions from council? Councilor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Well, thank you for the very informative presentation, especially for myself. There was a lot of information there for sure that. I really didn't know, but I was glad to find out. And um I, I guess I, if I had to ask a question, everybody follows. Everybody's on Facebook. We see all the pictures of all the stuff going on around, around the end and all the concerns. Would you be able to list three concerns that need to be addressed now? And would you have a solution for each of the concerns? Would you be able to do that?
I think we can. Um, I will certainly.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but, but I'd be curious because I, I know. We see the issues on Facebook and it really came to light on the weekend with the car rally with everybody in the tents on the street and. Uh, some people walked and saw all the problems and uh even our police chief took a walk there and saw that. And that I, I said that was great for him to do that, not just to get reports from officers to see actually what's going on. So uh would there be three concerns that that need to be addressed that we could do, help out as a council or individually or? Just a question.
The one, one concern I, I think I've just addressed that is.
You probably have to go to the microphone.
I think one of the concerns that we, we would like to address, of course, and it's always a money factor, is that we do want to have security. A second security. We really need that. We need somebody to be outside. Checking on the street. If you remember back some time, we had a security on the street. That was their job was to monitor what was going on or outside the four twenty-three, which was our daytime center. And that made quite a difference. And I think a lot of what you're hearing right now is um a lack of seeing that. And an insecurity that we don't have our, our security on the street like we once did. And that all comes down to money. So we pay twenty-two thousand dollars a month for security right now. That's a lot. So we'd pretty much have to double that if we want to have a security outside, but we are working on that. We're, we're trying to work towards that. Charisse, do you have a couple of concern you would like to bring up?
Well, I'll kind of lead you into it then.
Sure.
When we put the railway loft in, we created seventeen individual rooms. So people were through Heather Sheridan, I believe, had a list of people, put them in there. I don't, and I'll just say this, I go by Talbot Street. I don't see very, at any time, there's people have their stuff out front on the street. They have it in their rooms. And I understand at the inn, they're not able to take their personal belongings. And that's the personal belongings. You, you have to appreciate that's their life. That's what they own. And they don't like to leave it outside. But they do leave it outside and yet they can't bring it in. And, and the other thing I noticed when I did the tour with Lori, it's like. There's two bunk beds, right? And, and they're just like that. Well, there's no privacy really, you know, and, and I, I. Related to like sending kids to camp. Kids go to camp. They're, they think that's great. Bunk beds, have a good time. But we're dealing with people who have mental health issues, are homeless, they're worried about their security, they're worried about their safety, you know, and um. It's not easy for those, for the people. It's not easy for you people, but I noticed with the transit building. A lot of, I'm not saying a lot of the problems disappeared because there's full-time staff there, but we don't see the people out on the street. And the other big issue people keep telling it, we got to get it off Talbot Street. You know, the people want to live on Talbot Street. And, and I did a, a ride along with a couple of the police officers and they'll tell you. Talbot Street is their home. Doesn't matter where you put them, they're coming back to Talbot Street. And the worst time is in the summer. Because it, they don't want to stay in there. They can sleep outside. They can sleep in the alleys. The winter time, they're forced to go. That's a different story. But I, I guess with all the commotion going on now, I don't know, I don't have answers. I wish someone had answers what to do. Uh, maybe we need to build separate cubicles like they did at the tran, at the transit. But that's all down to money. You know, and um I, I, I wish I had answers for you. Anybody who talks to me about it and complained to me about it, the first thing I say, well. Tell me how to fix it. I want to know how to fix it. And they don't have any answers either. Just get them off the street. You know, so anyway, I'm done talking. Thank you very much.
Just let me, uh, just, I agree with you completely. We have uh dividers and that's, we tried to give them privacy. In the beginning, we didn't have dividers. When.
I know they came in after.
And then we put dividers in, but still, that's not enough privacy. We, we recognize that, but we don't have. Forty spaces to, to put people in. We just don't. So that means we need a different building, a different place. As far as being on Talbot Street. I don't know the answer to that myself.
No.
But I do know that when, I'm in, I'm in healthcare. I'm one of the ones up there that says healthcare. And you know where hospitals are built, right downtown. Because that's where people are. And that's where their resources are. And so whenever you build something that has to. Help the people that are downtown or can't get anywhere else. I know there's some suggestions that we go out into the country. How are they going to get there? And when they get out there, how are they going to get back in there to get to different agencies? You can't do that. That's a prisoner war camp, by the way. That's not, that's not compassionate. But anytime you see a clinic, a hospital, any of those things, they're right downtown. So the people can gather and get there. It was complicated for the people. They got used to it. We called it the sidewalk shuffle. They went from the church to downtown to the four twenty-three, and that worked out well. People weren't on the street. But uh they still had to get from one place to the other. You just can't put them in a building and leave them there. You have to give them access. You just have to. So I agree with you.
So I just have one follow-up question, Your Worship. I noticed, just one. I noticed on your board composite, you have a lot of people. But you don't have a city council on unless your worship's on that committee. You don't have a city council. Was there some reason you didn't want a city council?
We would love to have a city.
I would volunteer.
Okay.
I, I, I'm saying, but I don't know if your worship is on the committee or not.
Well, no, it's not.
But, but I, I'm looking at, I'm thinking, I had, I spent an hour today with our city manager Sandra. And I learnt a lot from her and uh, but there isn't, I didn't see anybody on. I, I would volunteer to be on that committee because I really think there's things that we need to do. I don't know if I'd be of any help to you.
I would, I cordially and.
You can let me know then if that's worth, if it's approved by the, your worship of that. If he thinks that's fine or anybody else wants to do that, I'm, I'm happy.
We need you to be on our board. We really do.
I'm happy to do that.
That's amazing.
Well, you can let me know when the meetings are and the stuff is and whatever I can do.
Oh, you'll wish I'd gone away.
I always have lots of questions for you.
By the time I get done with.
I wish I had more answers, but anyway, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Herbert, that's an excellent volunteer piece. Thank you. Um, they will vet your credentials and then let you know. Further questions from council? Counselor Clark?
Thank you, worship. I had sent through a number of questions beforehand. And in all fairness, they weren't all for the staff. You're just part of the puzzle and I, you know, your presentation. This evening, you're a big part of uh the solution, but I think the city uh owns a big piece of that. And we're trying to work with you and, and others, you know, on housing. So my question would just be uh to some of our city staff. Uh, in terms of the, the building, um for example, when um, when you arrived at the inn. Um, it was my understanding that the outside area was going to be much bigger for you and um. And that eventually the, the street was going to be, the streetscape was going to change, the sidewalk was going to be bumped out, things like that. Provide more space.
Right.
To me, um, it seems awfully small space for the number of guests that you have. And if they want to have a smoke or if they want to, you know, take care of their things, uh they're in a very. Very small confined area. So therefore they spill out into the alleyway, they spill out into the parking lot. And um so some of it is, some of the questions I had were, what are we doing as a city, as our, our city side of things? Including security, whether or not we can be making use of bylaw officers to assist your uh security issues, things like that.
Jeff, sorry, Mr. Ray, would you like to handle the building piece?
Thank you, Mayor Preston. Through you to Counselor Clark. Uh, with the enclosure, that we want to complete that next year. Because we have to do roadwork to allow the sidewalk to come out. Um, I can, I'll forward you the original plan that was sent forward. Because um we took the, if you've ever been there, you can see the enclosure now goes right up to the municipal sidewalk. If we push that out further, uh there wouldn't be enough room for them to get around. So we do have plans. Uh, Justin's team is going to redo Talbot Street next year. And we want to include um the, the enlargement of that area within that capital project. That will include increasing um the enclosure area and putting the, the green space in front of that to soften the appearance.
Thank you. And to follow up, was, was there any thoughts of making any use of our parking lot? The guests are making use of it now. Is there any way that we could enhance that area? So that it's more conducive to, to being a um. In a secure manner. Um, and you know, um, that security looks at it. Um, they're there and, and it's just kind of, I don't know if, if there, it's being monitored or what kind of actions are, are happening in, in that area. And it's not really I, the inn's issue because they're off property and they're on city property then.
Uh, that's a complicated question because there's a combination between the public and private space. With respect to the parking lot itself, we're reviewing that in terms of light levels, levels of security. What sort of other security manners or uh implementation we can install there. Um, I'll put in forward a, a small um report to HR on that this week. On what we can move forward to um control some of the activity. To make it safer for uh, for patrons of the parking lot.
And if, if I may, I, I think the, the last question I had with, was with regard to um. The uh, um, the building itself, uh as Counselor Herbert mentioned, it's, it's size and whether or not um. There's any thought when we look at new projects, whether or not there's an, an opportunity to reexamine. Um, the needs of the city in terms of space, uh if we're, if we're at max all the time now and it's the summertime. I can't imagine what it may be like in the wintertime when, when we start to um, to really ramp up with the needs. So uh the problem's not going away. We seem to be bulging at the seams now. And I'm just thinking as we start to look at. New projects, whether or not there needs to be a, a shift to another, another location. Uh, which might serve everyone's needs uh better. Perhaps more space within the building. There's always problems when you have too many people in a small space and um. And so I'm just hoping that we can, as a council, can look at that in the future as well.
That's, that's a good point. I think I could speak is Danielle, you were mentioning about um the reduction. You, you think, I can let Danielle speak to this, but we've been in it six months. Danielle has some uh facts that I think illustrate that hopefully things will be uh lessened. And put less pressure on the street and on um in out of the cold as well.
And maybe just before you get away, the, the, there's been a, a, a lot of property damage in the area. We received some emails from property owners that were there. I was just wondering how we've been able to respond to their uh concerns. Where there's had damage and how are we addressing that as a municipality?
I haven't been involved in that. Um, but I can get back to you on how, what the response has been.
Okay. Did, do you know who has been involved? Has anybody?
No.
We all got the email and.
Yeah.
We were asked for these questions ahead of time.
That's part of the reason the inn has been seriously talking about a second. Uh, security officer, uh including outside security. So that answers kind of who. Um, the board of the inn has shared with us tonight that that's what they're going to be doing. And I think you'll hear in a report later on this evening from Counselor, from uh Chief Harridge about the uh. Special Constable Program that will also be downtown Saint Thomas and that will, will, will work with that. Look, I, I don't disagree, Counselor Clark. Sometimes it's a person is in the back parking lot. Is that a tenant of the inn? Or is that someone who's just downtown because I'm downtown? And so we'll, if we can put people outside of the inn to help, that's going to make a huge difference. I'd love to hear Danielle's conversation about capacity issues and where we're going, especially with the Queen Street project.
Thank you, Your Worship, and good evening, council. To your point, Counselor Clark, about matching resources to need. I think it's very important that we keep in mind that the solution to homelessness is not emergency shelter. The solution to homelessness is housing and housing with supports. And in our community, we have plans not only in place or being considered, but actioned that are working. Uh, and we have lots to be proud of in Saint Thomas. Uh, so to the point of making sure our resources are matched to need. What I'm very happy to share with you is that while it's not been officially announced just yet, it will be tomorrow. We are confirmed by Built for Zero Canada to have reached our first milestone in reducing chronic homelessness by ten percent. And in fact, our June data shows us that we've reduced it by twenty-five percent. Uh, and I'm happy to share with you that we're just getting started. So when our second build, for example, within Dwell opens up, we anticipate that that percentage will go even higher. And that we'll be in a position to revisit what our emergency shelter needs are. Uh, and we'll work closely with our partners at the end, the end to identify what it is that they need to ensure that service still exists in our community. But based on need. And we're hopeful that that need is going to come down significantly, uh and perhaps in time for next summer.
Okay, Counselor Clark, further? Good. Thank you. I have Counselor Kohler then Counselor Baldwin says.
Thanks, Your Worship. Uh, Danielle answered some of the questions there and uh I think it's what is happening in the community is great. And I think I just wanted to recognize what you, what you said at the start of your presentation about housing twenty, being able to put twenty-two people into permanent housing. And I think that's what it's all about with all the partners that you're working with and uh our staff. Uh, working, that's the, the end goal is to ultimately hopefully not have a need for a shelter. But uh in looking at that, when it comes down to the, I guess, what, what people see when they, when they go by and kind of. Piggybacking on Counselor Herbert's project, do we have a plan? Is, is there enough space for some lockers and things like that? When they are doing the cleaning, where, where people would have a space to put their belongings? So they're not putting it out into the street with them when they go out there. And, and then even with the security process, what happens to that internal? Security officer, can't he not be moved to the exterior of the building? When the cleaning is being done and the, and the people are outside at that time, like I don't know if that's something that's in the works right now, but some, some storage. And then if you could touch on the capacity too, because I keep hearing that we're overfull and then sometimes that we're not at capacity. So what the average uh capacity is right now, do we still have room or, or not?
We have, we have forty beds. We have forty people. So we're at capacity for sure. And as far as the lockers go, we do have lockers, but um we're in the midst of trying to. Find a lock that cannot be broken because um they're very skilled at opening things and breaking locks. And so that's a project that we've got going on internally is to find something that can't be tampered with. Albeit those lockers aren't huge by any means. So um they're limited to what they can put in that space. And so they, they do have to get rid of some things, but we do have the, the lockers and we are working on getting, keeping them safer. Or trying to make them so that they stay safe. It's a problem. They can get into just about anything. They have the toolkits for it.
Counselor Baldwin says?
Thank you. First, I would like to take the opportunity to thank you, the volunteers and the staff. And the partnerships that you've been able to create in this community. I am very grateful for the presentation and for the numbers that you have provided us with tonight. My first question is, when people in the public would like to make donations to the inn. What is the mechanism that's in place for them to make either a donation of items or a monetary donation?
For uh, they can go onto our website and they can leave a note or they can go onto Facebook. Usually what happens is that they get in touch with our management staff and then it comes through to me. We have a fundraising committee and so we have been funnel, funneling everything through the fundraising committee. And then when the, the act. And then when the the actual donation takes place, we send them out a note and we thank them. And depending on uh the size of the donation, one of us on the board will call them and thank them for it. So it usually routes itself through me. It but when Laurie was here, when she's on leave right now, but it comes through her or myself.
My next question is, you touched a little bit on Facebook. So if members of the public are looking for donations that they can give to the inn and to the um the guests that are there.
Right.
They can view that and there is a list on Facebook.
Yes.
Uh and that is
On the website.
On the website. And what are some of the items that are always in high demand?
We're always looking for clothing. We're always looking for personal items, particularly for women. Uh anything along those lines, soap, uh clothing, underwear, all those kinds of things that are hard to get in touch with. We have uh just toothpaste and soaps and all of those things are very, very much appreciated. Um and we, as I said before, we have a list on the website, we have a list on the Facebook, and we update that routinely. So when we get down on some portions of it, we go and we ask the public for donations for something else.
Thank you. And women's hygiene projects, products as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And I would also like to thank you for, I did have the opportunity to tour the facility and I really look forward to the invitation that you extended to members of council tonight to come back. I will be taking you up on that offer.
Thank you. It'd be wonderful for you all to come and see it. It gives you a different perspective on what we're doing there, if you can actually.
If I can add, there's an, I know that there's a number of people in town that aid you with meals. Also, you can tell what the the needs, but there there is a kind of rotation process on your meal volunteers and and it's another way people can donate.
Absolutely. We're always looking for people to come in and take a night, take an evening and uh cook. Or just bring bring food, like lots of people bring in pizzas and other kinds of foods that you can get around town. And the guests love that. I mean, that's a real treat for that. And baked goods. Lots of people bring us lots and lots of cakes and things. They love that too. So does the staff.
Counselor Peters.
Thanks very much, Your Worship. And um first, I just want to say thank you very much for the presentation and and thanks to your staff and your volunteers for what you do of helping some of the most vulnerable people in the city. You need to understand, though, that the, when the public gets concerned, they don't go to the inn. They come to the mayor, they come to council. And I can personally say that I have heard from one, two, three, four business owners, property owners in the area who are extremely concerned about what's going on of the damage that's been done to their property. Um I can cite one day particularly because um I made sure that council was aware of it, June, Sunday, June twenty-sixth. It was strewn from the back alley with all kinds of personal belongings from the back alley almost all the way to Talbot Street. Um this past weekend, um the alleyway was a gathering place for a number of individuals, the back alley. Um behind the back alley was another gathering place. And it's us that hears the issues. And and so and and so the the public and some of them are sitting up in the gallery tonight. They look to us for the solution. And I don't know when, with some of these issues, whether it's because the inn is the magnet that offers the supports to people, that in individuals will just, you know, stay nearby. But we we have got to find a way for the inn to be better neighbors with its neighbors. There are, there are too many outstanding issues that um, you know, people being, I I I could go on, and I'm not going because I'm I'm, hopefully you've you've heard some of them or some of these emails. Yeah, I I am. So I'm not, I don't want to to re re rehash them. But we we have got to find a way collectively that we think about the neighbors and the impact of the good work that the inn is doing, but some of that spinoff um is having on the neighborhood. And and that is causing a real problem. I I I, you know, I, the the shopping carts, we've got a, we've got to find a solution. We cannot continue to see shopping carts in the back alley. And I'm not looking to you, I'm looking to Jeff Bray and I'm looking to staff. We have got to find a solution to deal with the the shopping carts. And I and I realize it's a sad state to see, but that a lot of, a lot of individuals, that is their life belongs. And and it's important to them. And uh and we need to, if if the inn is going to continue to be there, we have got to find a way to solve that solution. And quite honestly, I don't want to wait till next year's capital budget, Your Worship. I think that this is a project that, if there's something in the books, that uh we need to find a way to accelerate it and get it in front of us um sooner than later. Um if the inn is at capacity right now and it is summer, um in six months, what are we going to do? And I think to build on Counselor Clark's comments, I think we need to start thinking about what is the plan B of of what other options are out there that are available. And I don't know what they are, but I think we collectively between the inn and city staff, we need to start thinking about these things um and and start looking ahead. Um because we we want people to uh come down and enjoy the restaurants that are in the neighborhood. We want people to rent buildings that are in the neighborhood. But uh when I hear fairly constantly from a number of individuals that that are owners of properties there that are concerned, um it comes to, as I said earlier, it comes to us as a council. It's, we're all, we're all hearing it. We're all getting the emails. A lot of the emails are copied to all of us. But um we need the inn to be better neighbors and and please tell us what we can do to help the inn be better neighbors uh um in the community. But um uh you know, I look forward to hearing staff report back, but I just think that some of these items um need to be accelerated. Thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Peters. And Counselor Herbert, will you finish up?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Uh just a couple of quick questions, if they're quick. Capacity's forty, right? So it's filled every night? So then the people putting up tents around the city can't get into the inn or they don't want to be in the inn?
Most of the people that you'll see that um are around the city or around outside in the outskirts, they don't want to be in the inn. There's a lot of people out there who don't want to be inside, and sometimes they feel safer sleeping on a park bench.
Okay, is it a first come, first served basis?
Um.
Or can they say, this is my bed, I'll I'll be here the next five nights?
She is.
So they have a place to sleep every night?
Sharice knows the the guests better than I do, so she can.
I I just curious, is it first come?
It is. No, great questions, great insights. Actually, yes, it is first come, first served. Guests are encouraged to sign for their beds so that we know that we're coming, they're coming back the next night. Some of the people that we deal with struggle with literacy issues. They actually can't even read or write. So we have to take care to do double duty and make sure that their bed is held for them. Some individuals have too much anxiety to sign. They don't want to put a name to paper, things like this. So we have to be sensitive to these needs as well. Um our capacity is not always brimming. Weather does have play a factor in that. We use a lot of incentives to encourage individuals to come in and stay in. And I'm talking everything from gift cards to go and get themselves a nice cap and just treat themselves to um pair of flip flops, um different little things, um pizza night, things like this, just to get them to come on inside and understand that it is a safe place and they are genuinely cared for. Um and so we do strive actually to walk around the perimeter of the building that way um and and make sure that they are aware of our presence. Um so that even in some cases, if they don't choose to come in, they know that they could really yell and and we would be right there for them. Um so so i- it's it's a work in progress on a daily basis. We can't, we can't really determine a trend. Um it's really an anomaly right now. The the numbers are just up and down, and it really is contingent on weather. So.
Anyway, thank, I do have other questions, so when I come to my first board meeting, I'll bring them.
Okay. Thank you.
Um thank you for taking Counselor Herbert from us.
Okay. No problem.
Could you, could you hold your board meetings Monday nights? I'm just, just kidding. Thank you so much for coming tonight. I I'd like to just finish with, four years ago, I was elected mayor. And not too many weeks after that, really because of Sandy mostly, learned a lot about in out of the cold and what and what we did from a shelter in this community. And the following April, I had the worst night I had as mayor. April fifteenth, we closed the shelter because it was a seasonal shelter and it closed in April. That night, it was about minus ten. And I said, as the mayor, and we talked about it as council, we've got to be better community than this. Well, if you, if you fast forward now, we're living in a fast-forward world, and I know you have been living at a hundred miles an hour. We've gone from about twenty capacity at in out of the cold at the church a part of the year to forty capacity year round. We've done a a place and time inventory where we know the homeless in our community and a by names list. And I thank you for where this community has gone at identifying where it is. Counselor Peters is right. This council must make sure that capacity touches capacity needs. And each time we look at it, but with what we're have under construction right now, what we have done with the rail city lofts, and now what we have under construction at Queen Street would be forty-five more people housed permanently.
That's right.
Um if we're at forty at capacity there, that's really what we're seeing. We've got to make the capacity match. And then as this council is done and will continue to do in its next term, is to continue to look at what's the next step beyond that. And then the step beyond that, we can, we can solve homelessness in St. Thomas. It's heavy lifting, folks, but we are the ones that have to do it. And you're right, and Counselor Peters, thank you for bringing up, you've got to help us with it. If there's issues happening around the inn right now that the city can deal with and help you deal with, great. Otherwise, we'll help you. Also, you come up with your ideas and let's see what we can do. I think this is an us problem, and it's not just in and city. It's a number of agencies that need to be working a lot on this. We're, you're hearing from Ca- uh Chief Harridge tonight too, and we know that part of it is is that security piece, the safety piece too. Thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight, and I hope every counselor takes you up on coming to visit.
I hope you do too, Mr. Mayor. I do too. And there, everyone's welcome, and thank you for having us in. Thank you for letting us give you some information.
Thank you. Hey, what's next?
Your Worship, our uh next item relates to amended service manager contribution agreement and agreement for assignment. We could just, thank you, Chris. I have a motion that report SESS oh nine twenty-two relating to the amended contribution agreement and agreement for assignment for the property at two oh seven Ross Street. Be received for information. And further, the council approved the amended service manager contribution agreement and agreement for assignment attached to report SESS oh nine twenty-two. And further, that bylaws be prepared authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute the amended service manager contribution agreement and agreement for assignment as it relates to two oh seven Ross Street, moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Burgess.
Uh questions or comments? And maybe I have the first one. I don't, Counselor Peters, were you, was it you and me when two oh seven Ross Street opened? As an affordable housing um building? Yeah, I I I thought it was. And it it it, so this is just a change in ownership and a change in management of what is already an affordable housing project in our community? Great. If the, I just wanted to clear that up so the people knew why we're talking about a change in in structure at two oh seven Ross Street. Further questions or cons or or comments from from council? And I'm sorry, I took first one. I'm not sorry at all. Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to uh uh the application for proposed official plan and zoning amendment for the property at seventy-nine to eighty-three Elm Street. I have a motion that report PD forty twenty-two relating to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for seventy-nine to eighty-three Elm Street. Be received for information. Moved by Counselor Burgess, seconded by Counselor Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Counselor Rymel.
I I just wanted to know whether um the issue about the, and I'm not sure if that's a site plan, but the issue about the uh access to Pinafore Park at the end of the mini po- uh putt golf, if that had been resolved? Or or is that still intended to have a an opening at the back of the uh parking area of the putt golf into the park?
Mr. Pompilly, you get this one.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, um that will be something that we'll be addressing through site plan as as the plans evolve. Right now, what we've seen is just conceptual, but that is something that we will work with um some some of our other city partners and finalize that during the the site plan process.
And I I see that really as a concern, you know, for people wanting to, instead of, you know, going into the golf, you know, parking in Pinafore Park and then just kind of scooting over. And so it would really minimize the amount of parking that we have available for people in Pinafore as well, so.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from council? Well, seeing none, I I simply wanted to make the point that we we've been talking whether this is housing or fun. And right now, we're changing the zoning, we're adding a layer of zoning that is allowing the mini golf. It doesn't take away the zoning that is currently residential. So at if at some point was no longer mini golf, it could easily become housing at some point. So all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to an application for proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment for the property at ten twenty-four for uh St. Thomas Medical Center. I have a motion that report PD forty-one twenty-two relating to the proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendments for ten twenty-four Talbot Street. Be received for information. And for the council authorized staff to prepare site-specific draft amendments to the St. Thomas official plan and zoning bylaw fifty dash eighty-eight to permit a medical clinic on lands which may be described as lots fifty-one to fifty-four on plan two oh nine and part part of lots twenty-six, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty in the city of St. Thomas. And further, that a public meeting be scheduled for August the eighth, twenty twenty-two at six PM in accordance with Ontario Regulations five forty-three slash oh six and five forty-five slash oh six as amended. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Rymel.
Questions or comments from council? Counselor Peters?
Thanks, Your Worship. Um I support this, but can can staff reach out to the property owner? The place is a mess. They, the house was burned three or four times. The property owner went in and demolished the place, and it's a pile of rubble. And it's an eyesore, and it's probably a hazard. And um I know I I can't add a amendment to make that a condition of voting for this tonight. But um the the it's it's a real disgrace and and staff needs to get that. Uh if we need to use property standards by law, then by all means, let's get that cleaned up.
Yep. Further questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried and agreed.
Next item relates to an application for proposed zoning bylaw amendment for thirty South Edgeware Road. I have a motion that report PD forty-two twenty-two relating to proposed zoning bylaw amendment for thirty South Edgeware Road. Be received for information. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Rymel.
Questions or comments from council? Counselor Peters?
Thanks, Worship. I'd uh respectfully request a recorded vote on this, and I'll be uh asking that when we deal with bylaw eleven as well too. Um I just want to say that um I don't support this. I didn't support it before. But I doubly don't support it now because I'm very disappointed that we had a very good public meeting, a a fulsome discussion um of from council, a good discussion and a lot of impact from the neighbors. And the fact that none of those comments have been incorporated into what is in front of us tonight, um disappointing. Thank you.
Counselor Baldwin says?
Thank you. I was going to bring up exactly the same points, but I do have an additional question. Uh this is based upon, again, we talked at great length about the increase of traffic into that neighborhood of uh and through Morrison, the school and locks, which are both expanding with population um and more kids attending those schools. I am wondering, because one of the big concerns is the cut through the walkway that goes through Pinehurst. And the sidewalks are on the west side of the street, but not on the east side of the street. So if we're creating more and more traffic to this area, is there a plan in um for environmental services to create some sidewalks at minimum on the uh east side of that street on Woodworth Crescent?
Sorry, further questions or comments from council? Sorry, you, you'd like Mr. Pompilly to?
Is there, yes, is there an opportunity for either environmental services or for the planning department to see if there will be a plan for some sidewalks on the east side of Woodworth Crescent?
Okay, we get Mr. Lawrence.
I believe there's sidewalk on the west side now, and you're asking if there'd be two sidewalks? No, there's currently no plans for that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Again, because traffic was one of the major concerns of the residents of the area. And Pinehurst Walkway is the one that students use going to, through to Morrison and through to Locks. There are no sidewalks on the east side of the street. The sidewalks are on the west side of the street. So they have to cross the street when the buses are using Woodworth Crescent to go through so that they can end up on the locks. When they go around to Dalewood, the kids can exit the bus on the side of the street where they are, they're not having to cross on Dalewood. But kids that are walking and the walking school bus, the active transportation network that we have for that, that Pinehurst Walkway that is used by a number of children going to Morrison and to Locks, there are no sidewalks as soon as they come out of that walkway.
Councillor Kohler.
Thanks, your worship, for some mentioned reasons already. I won't be supporting this, this either. But I, I also don't feel that the development is conducive to the neighborhood and that's an additional fact that I won't be supporting it. But also wouldn't mind some communication whether it doesn't definitely need to be in a report, but even out to council on, on our tree byline enforcement, because from what I understand, some of the trees that were moved here were not done under the bylaw. And I know some of them didn't require the, because of the size, but there were, were a couple that were taken down that in the opinion of some of the neighbors were not through the proper process. And from what I understand is that supposedly they need to be caught in the act of doing so. So I'm just, maybe there can be some communication later on and how the enforcement with the, the tree bylaw works. Because if you go there and there's a thirty inch stump that's sitting there, I don't know that we really needed to witness the person cutting it down. We definitely know that something, something happened there, but maybe some clarification if, if that was done. I know that walnut trees, they were on the, taken down by bylaw, but from communication to me that some of the ones were taken down without the bylaw and were of size that should have required it. So maybe I wasn't looking for it tonight, but if you do have an answer, that'd be appreciated.
Mr. Bray, if you can help us tonight or if you could come back, either way.
Thank you, Mayor Preston. Through you to councillor Kohler, there was an application put in to urban forestry. I'll follow up to make sure it was all followed appropriately. I know that some of the larger trees, they will have to replant trees in lieu of that, but I'll confirm.
Further councillor Kohler, are you, okay, any other council? See, then I, I, I'll say the same thing. Look, we had a public meeting where we heard a lot of things and I, I'm, I'm all for housing in this community. I, I, I would love another unit made every day somewhere, but this is a little too much for this neighborhood. And I think that's, that's really all that was said that night. And I, I will be voting against changing the zoning to allow more density than the three units that could be built on that piece of property. All those in favor? Oh, recorded vote councillor Peters has asked for, so let's do that.
Your worship, recorded vote. This is to receive the report. Councillor Baldwin says?
No.
Councillor Burgess?
No.
Councillor Clark?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on.
No.
Councillor Herbert?
No.
Councillor Kohler?
No.
Councillor Peters?
No.
Councillor Rymel?
No.
Councillor Wookiee?
No.
I worship?
No.
I worship, motion was lost. Next item relates to draft plan of condominium approval for the property at four twenty Wellington Street. I have a motion that report P D forty four twenty two relating to the draft plan of condominium approval file thirty four C V M twenty two five oh one be received for information. And further, that the application by four twenty Wellington Street Limited for a plan of condominium comprised of sixty five dwelling units at four twenty Wellington Street be draft approved pursuant to section fifty one of the Planning Act as amended, subject to the conditions outlined in report P D forty four twenty two. And further, that a public meeting be scheduled for August the eighth at six P M in accordance with section six point two point twenty eight sub six of the St. Thomas Official Plan as amended. Moved by councillor Peter, seconded by councillor Clark.
Questions, your comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item relates to draft plan of condominium approval for the property at four thirty Wellington Street. Have a motion that report forty five twenty two relating to the draft plan of condominium approval file thirty four C V M two two five oh two be received for information. And further, that the application by four thirty Wellington Street Limited for a plan of condominium comprised of sixty six dwelling units located at four thirty Wellington Street be draft approved pursuant to section fifty one of the Planning Act as amended, subject to the conditions outlined in report P D forty five twenty two. And further, that a public meeting be scheduled for August the eighth, twenty twenty two at six P M in accordance with section six point two point twenty eight sub six of the St. Thomas Official Plan as amended. Moved by councillor Rymel, seconded by councillor Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to community improvement plan project for the property at six thirty three Talbot Street. Have a motion that report P D forty six twenty two relating to a community improvement project by Vector Holdings London Limited for six thirty three Talbot Street be received for information. And further, that council direct that a bylaw be prepared to enter into a community improvement program grant acknowledgement agreement with Vector Holdings London Limited relating to C I P application twenty fifteen dash oh eighty two. Moved by councillor Herbert, seconded by councillor Burgess.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to proposed amendments to the Site Plan Control Bylaw and the Site Plan Control Committee Operation and Rules of Procedure Bylaw. Have a motion that report P D forty three twenty two relating to the proposed amendments to the Site Plan Control Bylaw and the Site Plan Control Committee Operations and Rules of Procedure Bylaw be received for information. And further, the council repeal Site Plan Control Bylaw ten twenty seventeen and replace it with the revised Site Plan Control Bylaw attached as appendix one to report P D forty three twenty two and repeal the Site Plan Control Committee Operations and Rules of Procedure Bylaw eleven dash twenty seventeen and replace it with the revised Site Plan Control Committee Operation and Rules of Procedure Bylaw attached in appendix two to report P D forty three twenty two. Moved by councillor Rymel, seconded by councillor Kohler.
Questions or comments from council? Councillor Peters?
Thanks very much, your worship. I just wanted to ensure that the municipal access committee has historically been an observer, even at times a participant. They've always reviewed the site plan reports to ensure that any barrier related issues are addressed during the site plan approval. There is, I just want to ensure either through Lou or from Jim that the role of the access committee will continue on site plan with these changes.
Okay. Mr. Pompilly, would you, you or Mr. McCombe? I saw Mr. McCombe's hand come up, but all right, well then, Jim, it's you.
Thank you, your worship. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this matter and through you to councillor Peters. Yeah, the bylaws essentially are not changing. The structure of the bylaws are very similar. The only things these do is appoint a authorized person to be the final approval for a site plan application. So the roles that any other committees have in the process is not proposed to change. The only other real change here is that the site plan committee will no longer be making a decision, but rather perform an advisory role to the authorized person. So, but everything else will stay the status quo.
Okay, further questions, councillor Peters? You're okay? Any others from council? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Last item under this committee is notice of a public meeting regarding an official planned amendment to be held on July the twentieth at six P M via Zoom. And this is from the municipality of Central Algen to consider updates to the municipality's official plan. Your worship, unless there are any items from the members for this committee, we'll now move into community engagement and services. First item relates to Emesley Field Jack Graney Commemorative Sign Installation. Have a motion that report P R twelve twenty two relating to the Jack Graney Commemorative Sign Installation at Emesley Field be received for information. And further, the council approved the installation of the Jack Graney Commemorative Sign in Emesley Field. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Herbert.
Questions, councillor Peters?
Thanks very much, your worship. I was hoping that council would be supportive of, of a third recommendation in this, and I would offer this up as an amendment. And, and the amendment being that, that city council declare Ju- July twenty seventh as Jack Graney Day in the city of St. Thomas.
What a good idea.
And that jumbo be lit in the colors of the Cleveland Guardians, the current team, which are red, white, and navy blue. Hopefully council will support that.
Yeah, with the move, or the mover and second, they're still fine. Great. And further questions or comments on the amended motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you.
Next item, your worship, relates to St. Thomas Police Service Community Resource Officer Unit. I've got a motion that report S T P S oh two twenty two relating to the creation of a Community Resource Office Unit for the St. Thomas Police Service be received for information. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor Bird.
Questions or comments or perhaps even some input from our chief? We get you here so seldom, chief. It's a, we're not going to let you go without saying a few words tonight.
Thank you very much, mayor. Good evening, members of council. As you know, Catherine Edwards has been doing a fantastic job in downtown St. Thomas. So with the work she's been doing and her presence and building those relationships that we so desperately need, not only with merchants, but with tourists, with visitors and, and with the vulnerable population that we were talking about earlier. And we want to expand our service delivery. And we took a look at some things that are happening in Western Canada with community peace officers, community resource officers, special constables, different initiatives that are occurring out there. And we thought we could make that work here in St. Thomas to enhance our presence in the downtown. Monday to Friday, not only in the daytime right now, but days and afternoons. And to build those relationships to help the vulnerable people navigate the social systems that they need to navigate and deal with some of the issues that were being addressed earlier by the end. We cannot be security for the end. I have to make that, try and make that clear right now. We are a team for the entire downtown and we are there for everyone in the downtown. And of course, we will make our presence known at the end and surrounding area to address the issues that are occurring there. I strongly believe in see it, deal with it type of approach, and that will be their approach. It's not about enforcement, it's about compassion, it's about empathy. And it's about building those very important relationships. Speak to the business owners. What concerns are they having? How can we help them? What do I need to bring back to council? What do I need to bring to the police services board? So that we can deal with the issues and make our downtown the place it used to be and make it a comfortable location, a safe location and a secure environment for people that want to be in our downtown.
Questions for the chief or questions on the motion? Councillor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Well, when I have read the report, I fully supported and I took the opportunity to go meet with the chief on it. And to me, this is really thinking outside the box. I mean, you can have your police service, but now we have an opportunity to do something downtown. And, and I really think it's important that we, that we look at this, consider it and, and make sure that we support the, the police. He's doing it in his budget. He's going to make it work. And I've, I've always felt that when we start to do stuff like this, where we're bringing in special constables and stuff, that maybe somewhere down the line with our budget coming due at the end of the year, maybe we could do something to help out as a council. I don't know, but, but certainly you're going to make it work for a while. And I think it's just great. I mean, I think the citizens of St. Thomas would be really pleased to realize that we have special four constables working downtown, opportunity to go back and working with Catherine too, I understand. Catherine's not going anywhere. She's the one that's built the rapport with everybody. And further down the road, I, I, I think this is going to pay dividends plus. So anyway, thank you very much to you and your, and your group to put this together and you have my support on it for sure. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kohler?
Thanks, your worship. I know the report speaks to it, but I'd like the chief to just kind of elaborate for, for council and the public, what, what changes do we envision if we, if we approve this? What, what can the public expect to see downtown? I know a lot of the things too, which is frustrating for your force and, and council is that a lot of the times it's repeat offenders with the catch and release, they just continue to. But how will this change and improve the downtown? And what, like if, if we go with this, what, what, what can the public see or expect to see change downtown if we do this?
Well, the public, first of all, they're going to see an enhanced presence. They're going to see two teams of two special constables with a social service and a lived experience background working from eight A M in the morning through to eleven P M at night, Monday to Friday to start. And that's where we want to start with a pilot and eventually lead into more of a seven day coverage down the street or down the road, sorry. Also, what the public that are in the downtown, because there are going to be members of the police, police station there more often, they're going to have an opportunity to engage with those officers. And like I said earlier, the merchants that are in the downtown, they're going to see the officers more often and have an opportunity to address their concerns. So I, I think what you're going to see is an increased presence, but also an increased opportunity for engagement, interaction and communication.
Councillor Peters, did you, did I see your hand? My peripheral vision isn't what it.
That's all right. Thanks, your worship. Thanks very much for the report, chief. And I'm pleased to see the authority that's going to be invested within these individuals. Will these individuals enjoy the same protection that a member of the police service enjoys? That in those sad situations when someone chooses to assault a peace officer, a charge can be laid. Will these individuals enjoy that, that same protection? And does potential culprit, will they need to know that, you know, this is, you spit at this person? It's like spitting at a police officer.
Absolutely. They do and will have that protection, no different than a sworn police officer.
Shuper, councillor Clark?
Thank you, your worship. I really like this program and think it's going to be a, a great one for downtown. And, and also just in general, the, the potential there for special constables in a number of related areas. I think you've mentioned before that other jurisdictions are looking at ways to free up their, their officers to do their core duties, which is investigative work. And so you could look at traffic, you could look at crime prevention or education or, or maybe even nonviolent crime reporting if somebody loses their, their bike stolen. Why, why do we need to send out a, an officer, an officer to, to that? It may, maybe it'd be a special constable. So I'm excited to hear what else might come out of this as you start to see the success of this program, what other things might happen in St. Thomas.
And to you, councillor Clark, you and I have talked about this exact thing in the past. And as I mentioned earlier, out in Western Canada, Canada, they are using special constables for traffic work and some low level criminal investigative work as well. And the new Community Safety and Policing Act speaks to outsourcing of police work using special constables to look after some of those low end duties that sworn police officers are having to deal with now so that police officers can focus on the core functions of policing. So once that. So once that new act and the regulations are approved, hopefully that's going to open the door for police leaders across the province to utilize special constables in different capacity.
Counsel Rival?
Thank you. Anyway, I think this is amazing. It's certainly very progressive for the St. Thomas, and we've always, the police service has always been progressive in doing new projects. So I just wanted to check, so the cost of this, you're including this within your existing budget?
Correct. There will be an increase, for sure, in our 2023 budget to have this unit. It's four members, and they're full-time. And there's a cost for salary and benefits, for sure, that will impact our 2023 budget and moving ahead.
And I also think that that is something the municipality needs to realize, like safety and security is number one, you know, for, to encourage people to live here, to want to come and visit. We need to make sure we have a safe city. And so as municipality, when we're looking at budgets, you know, we need to make sure that the police services have the funds to keep us safe. So I think it's great. I just wanted to check too, is there any issues with the union? With having a different type of position?
No, and when we were researching the special constable position with the Community Resource Officer Unit, I did have that conversation with the president of the association, and there are no concerns at that time.
Like, that in itself is amazing, because that's a critical piece. So to be able to have this different position in there and have the union on side makes everything just work so much better. So as I say, that's just amazing that you're able to facilitate that, because that will just make the project work better. But I think it's excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions for the chief, or on the issue itself? Seeing none? Chief, thank you for coming out tonight and bringing us such good news. This is, when do you, I think I know the answer, but could you tell us when we think we'll start to see these teams on the street?
I think they're in week four training, and we're looking at six weeks, and then some mentoring in the field with Catherine and some coach officers on platoons as well to do some general patrol work. So we're hoping early August.
Perfect. Thank you. I want to thank deputy chief for coming tonight, too. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Come back more often. We'll see. Okay, we have to vote on this. So any further questions or not? Question, all in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you.
Your worship, unless there are any further items for this, sorry?
No, go ahead. Oh, Counsel Clark?
I had a couple of questions. One relates to One Password Park.
Okay.
And the fields. Been to a number of soccer fields throughout southwestern Ontario, and ours are having trouble keeping up with the drought. And I'm just surprised when a large portion of the park is irrigated, why we're not being able to keep up. And part B of that would be the portions that aren't irrigated, for next budget, whether or not we could get a report back to see what it would cost to further expand the irrigation. And in the short term, whether or not we could use some of the turf maintenance budget to use a truck like Stripes do. I noticed on Fairview Construction, when the new frontage for everybody's grass there, they had Strive Trucking going up and down watering. And I'm just afraid with the new fields that we're going to lose them, they're not established, the turf, and they're brown. And I'm just hoping that we can do a better job on the irrigation of the portion that's irrigated, and whether we could come up with a solution for the rest of it before we lose it. Thank you.
Mr. Bray, can you help us with that?
Thank you, Mayor Preston, through you to Counselor Clark. You're correct. Part of the field is not irrigated, and we can go forward. We'll get some estimates for having that work done in 2023. We'll also investigate if there's alternate methods of watering the field, as you've described. Staff did realize last week that the fields that are irrigated weren't getting enough water, so they've upped the irrigation. It's also important to remember, too, that this is a new site. The soil is less, the quality is less than desired. So you get a site like Athletic Park that has had probably decades of top dressing, aeration, and overseeding. So we're starting that process to amend the soil at One Password. This is really only the second season, so it is a work in progress. But hopefully, as you said, we can increase the watering there, and over time it'll improve. The soil quality isn't that great there, unfortunately.
Got a second thing, Counsel Clark?
Yes, well, I've got Jeff up. I had a phone call the other day from Dave Smith, he's president of the Over Forty Hockey. And for 26 years, they've been using Thursday nights, and they've received a letter from staff saying that due to our policy that minor hockey wants to increase their time, and so they've lost their allotment from 6:30 to 10:30 at night. The reason that was given was that minor hockey has increased their catchment area, and they now can pick up players from Port Stanley. And so I'm not understanding that there, the staff member said there could be 100 to 150 kids from Port Stanley coming to St. Thomas, and therefore minor hockey thinks they need more ice time. So the Over Forty gang are upset. They've been there for 26 years. They are the taxpayers, and they don't understand why they're being displaced with minor hockey kids from Port Stanley, in a sense, because that's the reason they were given. They actually told that if they need ice time, that they should call Port, because Port's going to probably have a lot of ice time. I don't know the ins and outs of minor hockey, but I'm assuming if kids are going to come to St. Thomas, you would only have a few kids trying out on each of our traveling teams. And I don't understand why the ice time would be changing anyways. It would just mean less St. Thomas kids that would make a traveling team. So I can't see that, I can't see the rationale. And so to me, our policy's got a bit of a problem where minor hockey can say at this point in the process, and I know it's a process where you're trying to allot ice time for the fall, but it seems to me that every year, they do the same thing. They tell you that they need all this ice time, and then they relinquish it. And then you're stuck with ice time, because other people have had to go out and make other arrangements. So I'm just wondering if we could take a look at the policy, make sure that minor hockey is being fair in their ask, and that some kind of compromise couldn't be worked out with the Over Forty League, where maybe they start at 7:30 or 8 o'clock and go till 11:00, 11:30, or midnight or something, and that we really take a look at what minor hockey is asking for. So I'm not sure if there's a question in there, but my rambling was just that they would like an answer other than waiting and waiting and waiting until a minor hockey decides what they need for ice time.
Thank you. I understand what you're saying. We've gone through, as you said, we've gone through the ice allocation process. We've addressed the needs of the primary youth user groups. Unfortunately, the 45-plus team had one single block continuous that we can accommodate them, and other nights breaking it up, starting at the same time. But this is a work in flux right now, so hopefully we can come to some agreement.
Okay. Further items? Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you, worship. I've got a couple here. As far as the new animal shelter goes, I just want to put a bug in everybody's ear. And that's what I had somebody from the community say to me, wouldn't it be great if there was like a pet food store incorporated in the animal shelter, where people could, just a, you know, public-private partnership type thing? And I just want to throw that out to my colleagues to say that let's leave that open, hopefully as an option, because, you know, it's almost, I know it's not the same as skate sharpening at Timken, but the idea that within a public building, we could have some kind of private business running, and I just want to throw that bug into everybody's ear. And secondly, I had a very, very wonderful conversation with a constituent regarding, as we might suspect, the fireworks. And as the grandfather of a 13-year-old terrified dog, I'm not alone in spending five nights in a row walking around with a dog. And I understand that people want to have fun, and I'm not saying we don't do it, but just that I wanted to share that expression from a constituent. And her issue was the five nights in a row, and also a few other nights that go on. And as well, in her neighborhood, the backyards are very close together, and the person next door was lighting off some pretty aggressive fireworks that the debris ends up in her yard, and she's concerned about her dog the next morning choking on stuff. So it's not to be a downer about fireworks, but just to share the concern that five nights in a row is a lot of stress on a lot of different people and animals, and that if you do have a small backyard, please be cognizant of respecting your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Kohler?
Thank you. Just, I don't know if we have the staff here for the bylaw on that, but there's actually a bylaw that addresses that, especially for five nights in a row. But maybe we can somehow put that public notice out there. That's, it's definitely against the bylaw, what Counselor Wookiee just described.
Counselor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. My question is for Mr. Bray, if I could ask him to come up again. On July 1st, we celebrated the opening of the outdoor pool. J.C. Newside Pool was open on that day with a free swim for the residents of this community. And since then, the pool has been operating. I was wondering if Mr. Bray would provide us with an update of that event, and what it's been like at the pool going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Preston, through you to Counselor Baldwin Sands. I don't have the specific stats in front of me, but I can provide them. The swim was very well attended, I do know that. And I do know that registration hasn't maxed out for the swim lessons. There's still some spots, but they are going well. All lessons are open. But I'll provide that to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So it's going swimmingly. Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. This is through to Jeff Bray. I wonder if we could get an update on the Pulse Park beside the library. I was under the impression it was supposed to be completed last August, and there was a huge donation to get it going. And I just wanted, I did give you a little heads up, so you know, and you can share with us what you know about it. So thank you.
Mr. Bray?
Thank you, Mayor Preston, through you. We are meeting, the design is, we presented the draft design, what was that, maybe a month ago here? So we're just finalizing that design. I hope to have it to tender in August, and we'll proceed from there. I've kept Andrew Gunn consulting. He's appraised. Actually talked to him twice today. So he's appraised. He's letting, he's keeping the donor up to speed with where we are. It is behind schedule, but we're trying to push it forward.
Anyway, thank you. You're on top of it. So thank you.
Counsel Clark, more?
Just one last phone call. Not sure who it goes out to, but it's by law enforcement. Burger King, Pizza Hut, Wimpy's. It's not an advertisement. It's about their properties. And they haven't been cut. I wouldn't, looking at them, I don't think they've been cut this spring. And we just had the car show. Next weekend, we have a huge event in town. And I'm just wondering if our bylaw officers could make a trip to those three locations and see if they couldn't get cleaned up before next weekend?
I saw the answer was yes. Further from council? None? Okay, so that moved this out of infrastructure and civic operations?
Yes, your worship. Now, under infrastructure, the first item relates to a tender award for the supply and delivery of a cab and chassis with plow, wing, combination spreader, and dump body. I have a motion that report ES 5022 relating to that tender award be received for information, and further the council accept the tender submitted by carrier centers in the amount of $306,818 excluding HST for the purchase of the vehicle specified in the intended 2022-021 submission and as approved in the 2022 capital budget. Moved by Counsel Rymo, seconded by Counsel Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. So when I see we're getting a new truck for snowplowing, et cetera, with the city growing in four corners, do we lose a truck because we buy a new one? Or is this an addition to the fleet that we already have?
Mr. Lawrence?
Thanks. This is actually an additional one. So council, in the last report that we did that's referenced, authorized us to bring 2023 money for to 2022. It's actually development charges, and it's an addition. So it is a good thing for growth.
Good. Thank you. That's what I was hoping.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Next item relates to railway city transit on-demand and parallel transit performance. I have motion that report ES 5122 relating to on-demand and parallel transit performance be received, and further the council endorse the recommendations contained within report ES 5122, and authorize staff to begin implementation for service alterations detailed within report ES 5122 for commencement on September 1st, 2022. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Burgess.
Questions or comments on the report? Counsel Peters?
Thanks very much, worship. I just ask that there be some discussion with municipal access committee. It's, Patrick Ross has been really good at coming to the committee. Our, the committee, one member in particular who's very tech savvy has worked very closely with Patrick to try and iron out some bugs within the app. With the one constant concern that seems to be raised with a lot of individuals who are paratransit users is that a lot of them feel that they are being bumped by some, at certain times of the day, by students, and that there's just this feeling that the paratransit users need to have some priority. So I just asked Justin if you can relay back to Patrick to ask him to continue to consult with the access committee. Thank you.
Would you like to speak to that, Justin, or we are just okay and passing it on? Okay. Counsel Kohler?
Thanks, your worship. I know I brought that concern up earlier, and I was guaranteed that the app would not overrule a prior booked parallel transit, so I'm pretty sure that's still the case for that. But I did want to speak to this report, and I certainly will support it. And it's great to see that the changes that have been made are enhancing the service, and we continue to work through that. I know transit was high on everybody's list four years ago, and, you know, we continue to evolve with it. And the more we see that, the ridership goes up. And also want to just make sure that these concerns about being bumped are definitely taken care of, and people feel comfortable that when they do make those reservations, that they will not be bumped for that. But the, when you look at the stats and the unaccommodated have dropped, and adding this bus will just make it that much better.
Thank you. Further comments on the report? I can add the same thing. I know that we've talked about it all the way through the redesign of the transit, at the same time with the rail city transit, local motion transit. And now that we're seeing the fruits of that labor, and more people riding the bus and wanting the on-demand and sharing with Para, love to have us looking at how we can do better with it. So perfect, Justin. Let's pass that on, please. And let's see what we can do about increasing ridership even more. It's great to see people coming out. And just, I don't know if the report said it, but you shared with me, there's a a number, more than a handful of other communities that are now using the same app as us as a way to deliver transit in their communities. And others are finding that just having a bus running a route all day doesn't do it for you if you can do an on-demand pickup. So I wanted to share that with the people at home, that we're not the only person, only transit system out there working on making an app work better, and a better cost-effective, and a better service system. So thank you for that. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie.
The last item under infrastructure worship relates to Sunset Drive rehabilitation and acceleration opportunity. I have motion that report ES 5222 relating to the acceleration opportunity for Sunset Drive rehabilitation be received for information, and further that the Northwest Area 1 sanitary servicing project budget be increased by $1 million excluding HST. Uh moved by Counselor Rymo, seconded by Counselor Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you very much. It's just just an awesome idea. Like, do it while we can, do it like, it just saves it being closed a busy time later on. Like, this is a a brilliant logical solution. And it, and frankly, there's sections of sunset that really do need it. So uh again, uh awesome job uh to Justin's team. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Herbert?
Thank you. I'm I'm not going to comment on the report, but I waited because this was Sunset Rehabilitation. I I I just wanted to to give a a big thank you to Nathan Bachman and to Justin. There were some pretty hiccups once they shut down Sunset Drive down by by uh Fingal Line. And there was an increase in traffic on Stanley, and they were speeding, and they, but since then, they put up more signs. They've changed the detours. So I think it's great when people can approach our management, and they do make changes. So anyway, so thank you very much to Justin and to Nathan for doing those things. So thank you.
Counselor Peters?
Thanks. Thanks very much, worship. Um, just to Justin, and you and I had talked about this previously. Where possible, on sunset, um can we do what we can to include uh bike lanes and and those sections that are wider on sunset? I realize there's probably going to be some limitations with the bridges or some of the grades, say particularly from um Bush Road to Elm Street. Uh but where we can, can we do some widening for bike purposes?
Mr. Lawrence?
Uh absolutely. Um, we'll do our best. There's a lot of constraints, as you know, the the cemetery is the first one sloped down to Bush Control Plant. The bridge is uh the urban area is tight as well. Um but where we can, we can try to add it. It it would be wonderful if we could get bike paths and sidewalks right through the whole corridor, but I I think that's unlikely to happen and and completely, but whatever we can, we'll try and fit in.
Thank you for that. Further questions of Mr. Lawrence or on the report? Counselor Clark?
Uh just when we're on roads, we had the wonderful weekend, last weekend, and I know uh Talbot Street is going to be on the on the books for um update. So I think we just need to keep that in mind with uh with the car show and uh that we talk to those folks, and whether we have to, you know, talk about it at a different time of the year, depending on what your plans are.
Thank you. And we had that discussion, and we'll continue to have it and work with Justin on and his department on at what point will Talbot Street be fully in having surgery, and how can we work a a car show around it? For further questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Your worship, unless the members have any further items under infrastructure and civic operations, we'll now move into corporate governance and administration. First item relates to community grant applications from April to June twenty twenty-two. I have a motion that report TR ten twenty-two relating to community grant applications from April to June twenty twenty-two be received for information. And further, the council concur with administration's review of the applications received. And further, the council approve the community grant request from Iron Horse Festival in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. Moved by Counselor Herbert? Seconded by Counselor Burgess.
Questions or comments? Counselor Peters?
Your worship, I just wanted to have this clear. The iron, this is a grant to the Iron Horse Festival, but later on the agenda, we have the Railway City Music and Arts Festival. One and the same, or I I I believe that's the answer. It's one and the same.
There are not-for-profit under the their old title, but they've created a new festival. Okay. Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. While we're we're talking about grants again, and uh obviously, they have met all the criteria according to the uh uh the grant should be appro, should be approved. They've met the criteria. If you recall, last January, I asked uh if we could get for the top four people, top four grants that we give out, if we could get an itemized list, how are they spending the money? So we know how we're spending the money. And I've talked to Dan Sheridan quite a few times, and uh I I think it was he's assured me it's going to get done, but it it hasn't been done yet. And I would really like to see before the fall. It's just six months. Are are they following the guidelines? That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Sheridan, would you like to answer that or say, yes, we'll get that? I'm off. Sorry, now I'm off. There you go.
Thank you. Uh, yes, we're in the process of putting that together. Um, it's really the first time we've done that, so we had to go back twice to them. It's not their fault. They're getting us the information. So we just uh uh neck, it should be ready for the next meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Treasure. Further questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Perfect.
Last item under corporate governance and administration uh relates to semi semi-annual attendance for council for the period January tenth to June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. I have a motion that report CC thirteen twenty-two relating to semi-annual attendance for council from January tenth to June twentieth, twenty twenty-two be received for information. Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands. Seconded by Counselor Wookiee.
Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Your worship, unless there are any further items from the members for this committee, council will now reconvene into regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions, and actions of council and committee of the whole as recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, ratified, and adopted. Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
No reports of committees this evening. We'll now move into petitions and communications. Uh first item relates for a request to be deemed a municipal significant event from the Railway City Music and Arts Festival. I have a motion that council of the city of St. Thomas declare the Railway City Music and Arts Festival to be held August the eighteenth to twenty-first at Penefor Park to be a municipally significant event.
Peters?
Moved by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Next item is a copy of a resolution received from the municipality of Brighton regarding changes to the Ontario Amber Alert System. Uh next item is a copy of an application made to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario uh from the Centennial Sports Club of St. Thomas for liquor license for its outdoor area at forty-one Jonas Street. Um, members of council, council in itself may make representation to the commission regarding the application. Uh the last item under petitions is notice from the Ontario Energy Board regarding an application by Embridge Gas Incorporated to dispose of the balances in certain deferral and variance accounts through one-time billing adjustments effective January the first, twenty twenty-three. Uh your worship, unless there are any further items from the members under petitions, we'll now move into unfinished business. Unless there are any items from the members, we'll now move into new business. Your worship, seeing none, will, oh, sorry.
I've got, well, obviously, we need to talk again about our mural fest coming up this weekend, and how downtown looks so good with five thousand people in it last weekend, that we'll do it again this weekend about the murals. And how beautiful the job has been done on a lot of murals, and and we'll get to watch a number of being painted. But I also wanted to mention Sarah Van Pelt and her mini murals. If you haven't gone out and seen some of them, please do. But she was on the CBC Radio this morning, again, talking up St. Thomas because we're doing such a great job with murals. Um a and it's incredible. There's little people sitting there looking at all the murals if you go out and look. So please do go go hunt for where there are mini murals in our community. I know that there's one up on Elevated Park, but there's a number of businesses downtown that have a little mini mural out front, too. So everybody, come on out and see the mural fest this weekend and hunt for the mini murals, too. Uh and there's a number of things going on, scavenger hunts and and you name it, that has to do with the mural fest. Madam Clerk? Unless there's more? No?
Thank you, worship. I will now move into bylaws. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by Counselor Kohler, seconded by Counselor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie.
I have a motion by Counselor Kohler, seconded by Counselor Baldwin Sands, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee of the whole, and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Carrie?
Green. Oh, there you go. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. First bylaw, please.
First bylaw is a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the eleventh day of July, twenty twenty-two.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Next bylaw, please.
Second bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement between the city and Prespa Sales and Rentals Limited. This relates to site plan file for uh nineteen fifteen to nineteen Flora Street.
Questions, uh questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Next bylaw, please.
Third bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and Canadian Commercial T two Incorporated. This relates to site plan file for ten twenty-nine Talbot Street proposal for a fourteen-story, one hundred and sixty-two-unit apartment building with associated parking.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, next bylaw, please.
Fourth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement between the city and Vector Holdings London Limited. This relates to grant acknowledgement agreement under the Community Improvement Program for the property at six thirty-three Talbot Street.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Thank you. Next bylaw, please.
Fifth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal, seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and McQuirter Horvath Properties, Inc. This relates to Service Manager Contribution Agreement Amendment under the Investment in Affordable Housing for the property at two oh seven Ross Street.
Questions or comments? Uh seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Next bylaw, please.
Sixth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city, McQuirter, McQuirter Horvath Properties, Inc., and two eight four two five eight seven nine Ontario, Inc., uh relates to the assignment of a service manager contribution agreement under the Canada-Ontario New Affordable Housing Program for the property at two oh seven Ross Street.
Questions or comments? See none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Next bylaw, please.
Seventh bylaw is a bylaw to provide for the operation and rules of procedure of the Site Plan Control Committee.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Next bylaw, please.
Eighth bylaw is a bylaw to establish certain Site Plan Control Committee operations under section forty-one of the Planning Act.
Questions or comments? See none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Next bylaw, please.
The ninth bylaw is a bylaw to adopt official plan amendment number one oh two to the city of St. Thomas official plan. Uh this relates to miniature golf course at seventy-nine to eighty-three Elm Street.
Questions or comments? See none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Tenth bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw fifty dash eighty-eight being the zoning bylaw for the city of St. Thomas relating to the property at seventy-nine to eighty-three Elm Street.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Eleventh bylaw, do we do the eleventh bylaw? Because it is a recorded vote.
Yeah, the the eleventh bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw fifty dash eighty-eight being the zoning bylaw for the city of St. Thomas. This relates to uh the permission for two-three unit townhouse dwellings at thirty South Edgeware Road. Uh and a recorded vote was requested. Uh on the recorded vote, uh Counselor Kohler?
Oh, sorry. No.
Counselor Peters?
No.
Counselor Rymo?
No.
Counselor Wookiee?
No.
Mayor Preston?
No.
Counselor Baldwin Sands?
No.
Counselor Burgess?
No.
Counselor Clark?
No.
Counselor Herbert?
No. Okay, so uh that's not passed. So I will rise into a report the successful uh passing of ten bylaws. Thank you.
Your worship, I have a motion by Counselor Kohler, seconded by Counselor Baldwin Sands, that the reported council and committee of the whole on the bylaws be received and adopted, the same be read a third time, and gross, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
No notices of motion or public notice this evening, your worship. There is a need to move into closed session. I have a motion that this meeting be closed to deal with a matter of litigation. Two matters are proposed or pending disposition of land. A proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land. A position plan procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality, and a personal matter about an identifiable individual. Moved by Counselor Burgess. Seconded by Counselor Wookiee.
Uh before questions and comments, want to let the folks know at home, we will be going into a closed session now. Um and we 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 will not come back to the public uh on Rogers or on our own stream. We will uh pass adjournment from there. Uh so thank you very much for joining us tonight, and we'll see you uh in one meeting in August. And so all those in favor of entering closed session. Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you.